Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting, the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, May 10. If you're watching live on Monday, May 10, we encourage you to call in if you have questions or comments. The call-in number is 769-1677. As always, you can watch us live on cable TV. You can also watch us with live web streaming at PCTV76.org. And within a couple of days, you can pick up the video of this meeting as well as past meetings through on-demand video at that same website, PCTV76.org. So, welcome all. We have a full agenda tonight. The first thing on our agenda, however, is a happy event, and that is the installation of a new police officer. Our department has had a number of retirements, and we're at the circumstance where through a careful review of our staffing, we've determined that we need to add another patrolman, and that failure to do so would actually cost us more in overtime. And we have the happy event tonight of installing a son of Pleasantville as a new Pleasantville police officer. And I invite Police Chief Tony Charlitty to come to the podium and introduce that.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we get to welcome a new member of our department in, to the Police Department, and also have someone who is continuing a tradition he started several years ago when he first became a police officer. I've said this before, and I'll say it again, and I'll say it, I think, to the end of my days, that this is the best profession in the world, as far as I'm concerned. And what we're doing tonight is something that carries that tradition on in this profession as we move forward. In a few minutes, the candidate police officer will be taking an oath. And that oath really represents an almost sacred responsibility to anybody that puts on our uniform. And it really sets the standard to which we try to live, and to which, you know, which I'm proud to say our officers do live, live by, rather. The hiring process in our Police Department, just to take a minute, is a rather labor-intensive effort. And what it does is, it's a process that allows all divisions and all levels of the department to take part in the procedures and the process in hiring somebody. And then, as a byproduct, it takes some ownership in the ultimate choice we make as far as the individual's concerned. And the people you see here representing the Police Department, and I'm proud to say that they are here as members of our department, are one of the byproducts, or are several the byproducts. And what we're going to be doing tonight is swearing in another individual who's gone through that process, and who's made it through, and who we believe is going to be a great selection for our department. It represents the culmination of all we put into our hiring. Tonight, we'll be hiring Eric Burwa. Eric has been a resident of the village for a number of years. He has also been a police officer with the city of Mount Vernon since August of 2008. So, he's not coming in here, totally new. He's coming in here as a transfer, or as resignation reinstatement, as the law states. But he's continuing that tradition. Like I said, he started in 2008, when he was first sworn in as a police officer. He'll be assigned to the patrol division of the Police Department, where he'll work patrol around the clock. And then, to begin with, he'll be placed on supervised field training for a period of several weeks. And he will fill one of the current vacancies we have. As the mayor said, Eric is a son of Pleasantville. He's a graduate of my alma mater, Pleasantville High School. He graduated in June of 1996. And we are very, very happy to have him here, and have his family here with us tonight, and some of his close friends and relatives, to kind of take part in this momentous, joyous occasion for us all. So, Mayor.
Eric, let me invite you up for the swearing-in. Please meet you. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. "I, Eric C. Burwa..."
"I, Eric C. Burwa..."
"...do solemnly swear..."
"Do solemnly swear..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New York..."
"...and the Constitution of the State of New York..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge..."
"...and that I will faithfully discharge..."
"...the duties of police officer..."
"...the duties of police officer..."
"...according to the best of my abilities."
"...according to the best of my abilities."
Congratulations, sir. Welcome to the Pleasantville Police Department.
As I said, there are several members of Eric's family here tonight, one of whom is his wife, Michelle. Michelle, if you'd step up, please. I'm going to allow you the honor of pinning Eric's badge on him. This is a test, too.
He's only lost three offices.
Yeah. Three offices and two wives.
That's over 30 years.
Wow, look at that.
If you can come here and sign the oath book.
Just real briefly, once again, I'd like to thank the officers from the Police Department who showed up tonight. There are quite a few of them here. These officers, you know, came from home to be here tonight, and that's certainly something that makes a chief proud, to see people come and support the newer members of the department as they come in, and also support the members of the department who've been here for a while by doing that. And I'd also like to just offer my thanks to the mayor and the board, and Patty and Judy. This is a collaborative effort. It's a joint effort. This is not something that's done in a vacuum. Like I said, the Police Department puts a lot of time into it, and I know you guys do as well, and I want to thank you for the support you've given us over the years, and the support that you give us by allowing us to add new people and, you know, be able to accomplish our jobs out in the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And again, welcome to Eric Burwa. Let me add my thanks to all of you guys from the Police Department and all of Eric's family for attending. We are delighted to have you, and certainly delighted to add you to the family we're already members of, which was the extended family of the Pleasantville Village Government. So, we have a couple of other announcements to make tonight.
Should we assess the resolution first?
Yeah, perhaps we should. We have a list of resolutions, but we'll jump to the first one right now. Resolution number 2010-93. Steve, you want to read that?
Certainly. Let me just preface this by saying that our family has known Eric's family for some years. And my second oldest daughter is Elizabeth's roommate, though that did not enter into any of our considerations for her brother Eric. And I think I've known Beth around the yard since...
About as high as this?
Something like that. "Resolled, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, based upon the recommendation of the Police Chief, hereby appoints Eric C. Burwa to the position of Police Officer, Grade Four, effective at 12:01 a.m. May 11, 2010, at a salary of $57,642. Said appointment is subject to probationary period of not less than 12 weeks, to a maximum of 52 weeks."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations. Let me move to a few announcements we had, and then our next order of business is to recognize the students here tonight from the Pleasantville International Association. But I had a couple of comments to make on various subjects to begin with. And the first is that all of you who have been watching shared with us the process we went through on the budget for our fiscal year, which begins June 1. We passed that at a special meeting a week and a half ago on a Thursday night, just in advance of our May 1 deadline. And it included a tax increase of 5.7%. That is an increase that's a good bit lower from the position we started at, which was about 7.4%. And we struggled and worked hard to get where we got. I won't go through the whole details of the specific issues that we confronted this season, but they are common to what lots of communities are confronting, and common to what lots of households are confronting. And I can report that we began the week after the budget was approved, and will continue tonight, and most nights from here on in, to be talking about some long-term financial planning, as well as working on some specific areas of the budget where we have identified areas that we want to know more about, and are seeking ways in which we might be able to rearrange the chess pieces of government to create a more affordable and more sustainable future. So, more to say on that as the weeks and months progress. It's a job that never ends, but a job that all five of us are taking extremely seriously. So, we were asked by the county to announce that there is a Fair Housing Survey document, which is available on the web. Many of you may be aware that Westchester County reached a settlement with the Housing and Urban Development Department in Washington as the resolution of a lawsuit that had been filed against the county. And among other things, it requires the county to build 750 units of affordable housing in 26, is it?
Thirty.
Thirty municipalities over the next seven years. And as part of that, they are also required to analyze the impediments to fair housing, and have hired a firm to assist with that. One piece of that process is a Fair Housing Survey, which is available on the county website, which is westchester.gov. We'll put a link to it on our website, which is pleasantville-ny.gov. And anyone who's interested in it and who wishes to comment is invited to log into the links that we'll post in either of those places. It's an online survey with a Survey Monkey arrangement, and you can make your feelings known as part of this process. So, we encourage anyone who wants to do it to do so. If you don't have internet access and are interested in the survey, you can contact the county, or you could contact the village here at Eighty Wheeler Avenue and ask for a paper copy, so...
A what monkey?
Survey Monkey. It's the...
It's a technical term.
It's the technical term.
You know the Survey Monkey? No idea.
It's a web service that does surveys, so...
Not dangerous.
Couple of other things to note. Last Friday night, I, as a number of others in the committee, did attend today, a retirement dinner for Dr. George Cancro, who's the principal of Pleasantville High School. And we add our fond farewells to George and wish him well. He was particularly involved in village affairs, because he has been and continues to be until his retirement, the emergency services coordinator for the Village of Pleasantville School District. And in that capacity, was very much involved with Chief Charlitty and our emergency planning group at the fire department, the rescue squad within the village. So, congratulations to George on a well-deserved retirement, and we look forward to taking advantage of your services on a volunteer basis as a retiree. So, Pleasantville Day is coming up this weekend, Saturday, the 15th. I have not dared look at the long-term weather forecast. Our batting average has been bad, but maybe the law of averages is working in our favor. So, the 15th, this Saturday, is Pleasantville Day. There are activities, as always, going on all over the village, the high school. Art Department has their annual show on the second floor up at the Burns. We encourage everybody to go to that. We have a street fair, as always, down in Memorial Plaza. There'll be lots to do, lots to talk about. There are some new booths going to be down there, including representatives of the farm market, who will be in a position to show you what's happening with the farm market, including a rearrangement, some physical rearrangements of the market, expansion, something like a dozen new vendors, as well as music and kids programs of various kinds. So, we encourage everybody to stop by there as well. And the Green Peaville Organization is going to be selling compost bins. Those are going to be available for $50. If anyone is interested in advance, you can contact Helen Muir at greenpeaville@gmail.com. But you can also check it out on Pleasantville Day, where those things are available for $50, which is quite a good price. Then, lastly, before everyone falls asleep from this long-winded recitation, we've received the usual notices from Cablevision and Verizon about various changes in services. Cablevision's side, it's some minor changes in prices. For business basic, going from $23.20 to $23. I/O digital cable boxes are going from $6.51 a month to $6.70. I/O digital remotes from $0.24 to $0.25. That will be the penny that will push us over the edge. Verizon has sent an extended letter indicating some channel lineup changes. And any of you who are subscribers to Verizon FiOS, according to this letter, will receive a notification by mail, but they'll also have on-channel and message center notices that run from May 18 through June 30. With that, let's get to the moment at hand, which is recognition of the...
Good stuff.
...Pleasantville International Association ambassadors. And for that, I'll return to the podium. For a period of many years, decades, I don't know exactly how far back it goes, the Pleasantville International Association has been a group of community volunteers who assist in planning overseas trips for high school students. For the most part, students are going in the summer every now and again, and I think one of the students this year is going during the school year, and will be there for a full semester, and occasionally somebody goes for a full year. It has been a remarkable, long history, and we've now arrived at the point where, when there are fundraising events for PIA, some of the people who come as parents and grandparents are themselves people who went on PIA when they were high school students. I can report from personal experience, that being the experience of my own daughter, that the business of a high school student deciding to strike out into a foreign land in the summer, and in many cases, live with a host family for a period of time. Frequently, these programs also include some sort of work project or a community development project. But these are students who are striking out alone into uncharted territory, and they go as representatives of Pleasantville, as representatives of Pleasantville High School, and as people who are full of the spirit and energy, and it is not saying too much to say courage, to strike out into a foreign land and knit themselves into a different community. And then, as part of the PIA project, they return to Pleasantville and are expected and happily take on the mission of talking to the community in various different settings about the experiences they had. And I can, again, report from personal experience over a period of many years, that it is a great night at Pleasantville High School in the fall, when the returning ambassadors talk about their experience. You can also catch them annually on PCTV, where each of these students is interviewed about their experiences. And it is an object lesson in how we're going to make a better world, to have these kids headed out, representing Pleasantville, and coming back to share the experiences they've had in other lands and other cultures with us. So, with that, we have something to send the seven of you off with, who are headed off this year, as well as something to honor the experience of the four students who went on behalf of PIA last year. So, let's start in no particular order with the students who are headed off this year. And the first is Sarah Brown, who is headed to Spain. Sarah, can you come up? Are you the one headed for a whole semester?
Yeah.
So, you'll be the guinea pig. I have three things to give to each of you. The first is a certificate that says, "The Board of Trustees honors Sarah Brown as the village's 2010 Ambassador to Spain." That is an honor, a power I have taken on for myself, to independently anoint you as our ambassador to Spain, and it's, I can't think of a better person for it. Traveling on behalf of the Pleasantville International Association, issued this 10th day of May 2010, honoring the spirit, the energy, and the courage shown by PIA ambassadors from Pleasantville High School. I will also burden you and each of those that follow you with two other things. One is this 300-year history of Pleasantville, 1695 to 1995, with the hope that it will become a bestseller in Spain. I do know that, as much as all of you wonder what your experience will be like in the setting you arrive in, in Spain, a lot of your host families are wondering what the experience is like for you in your hometown. And if this is something you want to leave with them as an indication of where you come from, we'd be pleased to have you do it. And then, lastly, we have some historical postcards of Pleasantville. Same story, these are pictures, many of them, that are in the book, but we encourage you to do one of two things, but only one of two things. And one is to leave them with your host family for their edification, or the other possible acceptable solution is to write notes and send them back to us. So, with that, I thank you very much. I appoint you the Ambassador to Spain 2010. Thank you, Sarah Brown. I have the same collection of three things to give to you, and by the power vested in me by I'm-not-sure-who, you are now appointed the Ambassador to Chile for the year 2010 for the Village of Pleasantville. Thank you. Have a great time, and we look forward to hearing back from you. Claudia Finn? You carry a big responsibility with these papers, which will let the people of New Zealand know that you are officially the ambassador to New Zealand.
Thank you.
Amanda Seijos?
France isn't going to know enough, doesn't know a lot about Pleasantville right now. They will when our ambassador comes back. Thank you so much.
Welcome, sir. You are hereby appointed Pleasantville's ambassador to Ghana, and we look forward to hearing exactly what experience you have in that remarkable place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mikey Elliott? "Our Department of State is swelling. You are now our sixth ambassador. We have offices in Poland." Well, thank you. And lastly, Natalie Ware? Natalie is headed to Germany. These are your documents. You'll present them to the president. We look forward to hearing from you when you come back. I understand that some of last year's ambassadors are studying for APs, which I suppose is an acceptable excuse. I don't know. We'll take it under advisement. John Sullivan is here, is he? Yes, he is. John went to China last year, an adventure, to say the least. We are commemorating your experience. We're a little late in giving you something to leave to your Chinese hosts. We give it to you anyway, with the spirit and respect associated with the great work you did and the courage you showed to do it.
Thank you very much.
Carolyn Fleeter is not here tonight. Connor Kennedy or Sarah Ilgelski? Well, those three names, let me just read them again for the benefit of the community. Connor Kennedy went last year to Australia. Carolyn Fleeter went to Belize. And Sarah Ilgelski went to Spain. So, those are the remaining three ambassadors who went last year. Seven going this year. An impressive bunch, a great bunch of kids. I can't think of a better bunch to represent this village to different countries. We look forward to hearing from you before, when you come back. And I will leave these three things in your hands. You can distribute them to those who well-deserve them. Is there anyone who would like to add something to it?
Thank you.
Okay. Enough said. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you.
One other thing I wanted to make a note of is, we are hopefully in the last lap of our streetscape improvements and intersection changes that start down near Key Foods and Look Oil and march their way up Bedford Road to the corner by Jean Jacques. It has been a long process. Patty, are we still thinking that the traffic light in front of Look Oil will get installed in the next few weeks?
Yeah, we are, and we're hoping.
Okay. So, does that mean that within a month or so, we think we're done?
I believe all of the sidewalk infrastructure is complete. We actually added a little bit to the project, but all but Cooley Street reconfiguration will be done. We have to have a public hearing on that.
Great. So, we're getting pretty close to that. A number of people have asked us about the reconfiguration of the parking area and the entrance to the Cooley Street parking area. That would be when you turn in towards Mediterranean. And there is now a bumped-out area that narrows the entrance to that parking lot, and it has appeared to a bunch of people, some of us included, that it may be too narrow for convenient traffic. But when you look at the plans, the long-term plan for this is to take the parking, which is currently head in facing the row of stores, Mediterranean, and the shoe repair store, and instead turn it around, so that it will be the same number of parallel parking spaces, but they'll face the other side, so that the car's headlights will be aimed in the direction of the Key Food parking lot. So, what that means is that the parallel parking that currently appears to be in the way of your entrance is going to get switched to the other side. And the end result of that is that the car's headlights will be aimed from one parking lot into another, instead of from a parking lot into the stores and restaurants. And secondly, we've been able to narrow the entrance and make the pedestrian experience crossing there, which used to be a gamble, to say the least, into a safer, more comfortable experience. So, more to be said on that. Did you say that requires a public hearing, Patty?
It will. It will require an amendment to the code.
Okay.
As far as my household is concerned, this can't happen fast enough. This is a personal pet peeve of my wife's.
All right.
She does not like that entrance.
Are there any other comments, announcements, et cetera? Reminding everyone that Pleasantville Day is on the 15th this coming Saturday, and please join us down at Memorial Plaza and its invirons. For any other announcements, we'll go ahead to our remaining resolutions, having already read the first one, which was the update on Eric Burwa. Now, we are 2010-94.
"Resolled, the pre-transport check register dated May 10, 2010, covering checks numbers 66303 through 66414, and 66416 has been reviewed, and they are hereby approved. As listed as follows, the general fund, $279,105.93; the water fund, $5,974.47; the capital fund, $9,955.50; the refuge fund, $1,153.21; the pool fund, $3,923; totaling $301,112.11."
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 95, John.
"A resolled, the Board of Trustees have hereby reviewed the minutes of the meetings held on March 1, April 26, 2010, and they are hereby approved."
Any, is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Brian, number 96.
"Resolled, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from Captain Lawrence Brewing Company, 99 Castleton Street, Pleasantville, New York, to serve alcoholic beverages in the parking lot of the brewery building on May 10, 2010, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., in conjunction with their four-year anniversary party. Said approval is subject to receipt of proper insurance certificates."
Is that like right now? Why are we here?
Is there a second?
Second.
I didn't know we had a building called the Brewery Building. Has it been changed?
It's Saturday's date. The 15th.
I like it.
Yeah.
The date is not right, right?
It's not today, though.
The date is May 15.
Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. So, the mover and second are happy with that change?
Yes.
Captain Lawrence Brewery is down on Castleton Street, opposite the side of M.L.A., and they have had such a party in recent years. It has been a successful business, as well as a great supporter of a lot of our causes, and we are delighted that they have reached their four-year anniversary, and we look forward to celebrating their fifth, and their 10th, and their 50th. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Number 97, Steve.
"A resolled, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the request from the Memorial Day Committee to hold the Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 31, 2010, at 10:00 a.m. Said parade route to begin at Bedford Road School, proceed down Bedford Road to the Memorial Plaza, concluding with a ceremony at the World War II Monument. And further resolled, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Police Chief to post no parking signs along the parade route and in Memorial Plaza, and to tow all vehicles violating this temporary parking restriction."
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Let me just take a moment to recommend to you that, I know a lot of people are away Memorial Day weekend, but it is a special event at the Village of Pleasantville that has been for many, many years, both for parade and the services held down at Memorial Monuments. And we will have, this year, as we have had in some past years, some comments from veterans, which are always important to hear as well. So, I encourage you, if you're away, to consider coming back in time for the parade on Monday morning, May 31. It's quite a remarkable event, and an important piece of remembrance in Pleasantville, so... Number 98.
"Resolled, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following budget amendments to fund over-budget accounts. The amount of $7,154 from the New York State Retirement Police to police uniform overtime; $325 police supplies to police uniform overtime; $306 from unallocated insurance to miscellaneous debt charges; $3,799 from contingency to library, totaling $11,584."
Is there a second?
Second.
These are our transfers from one account to another. They don't have an overall effect on the budget. They're simply taking money unexpected and unexpended in one account and applying it to an account that has greater need. So all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Number 99.
A resolved that the Board of Trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the chief of police to enact temporary parking restrictions within Memorial Plaza on Saturdays commencing May 29, 2010 to December 18, 2010, to accommodate the farmer's market. Said restrictions include, but are not limited to, the following: prohibiting parking within the plaza designated areas north of the gazebo on Saturdays from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., providing for an alternative means of egress from the plaza, and prohibiting rate yields at the monuments, and directing all vehicles to the traffic light at the intersection of Manville Road in Memorial Plaza. And further resolved, the police department is authorized to all vehicles determined to be in violation of this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. We'll have more to say on the rearrangement of Memorial Plaza on behalf of the farm market at our next meeting. The farm market, in short, is being rearranged so that it's at the north end of the plaza on the commuter side between the war monuments and the bridge overpass. And we will be cutting a passage through the current median so that cars on the commuter side can get out just north of the median. We have a call?
Mm-hmm.
Hello?
Good evening, Mayor Sheeran. Michelle Uchia.
Hey, Michelle.
386 Bedford Road. I wanted to call and say thank you to the trustees and to yourself for your diligent work on the budget. I know that you did the best you could in a bad circumstance. I also appreciate Jonathan's view of not dipping into using more of our fund balance. And I was curious to know, where might we see the budget? Will it be posted online so that we would be able to see the expenditures for, you know, each department or expense? Will there be something like that posted on the village website?
There will. The draft budget, which is already up on the website, it's been up for about a month, month and a half. You can look at that, although we made some modest reductions in various places in the final budget, and we ought to replace that draft with the final run. But Patty is nodding that that can be done within the next couple of days. Is that fair to say?
Certainly, yeah.
Yes, the answer is yes. Let's promise that by the end of the week, the final adopted budget will be up on the website and perhaps well before that. In the meantime, the draft budget, which was the one that anticipated a 7.3% tax increase instead of the final 5.7, is up there right now, and, you know, with modest changes, it would give you the lay of the land.
Okay, thank you for that. I also had a situation arise over the weekend that I wanted to bring to your attention. It happened that over the weekend, my family had a situation that required the attention of a youth officer. And I was told that the youth officer does not work on the weekend, that he works, whomever he is at this point, he works Monday through Friday days. Now, to me, that's like having an emergency room open without a doctor on call. And I, you know, I was very concerned, and I'd like to know, I don't know if the chief is still there, but who exactly is responsible for scheduling our youth officers so that there isn't one on the weekend? You know, it was just a very difficult situation, and there was, you know, nobody in the store, so to speak. And I was reviewing the joint village board meeting back in October that was held with the trustees and the Board of Ed. And Mayor, I know that you advocated a degree of outreach to the community by the Pleasantville Police Department and its youth officer to parents and kids so that we would know, you know, what their mission is, what is their philosophy, how can they serve us and our kids. And to date, as far as I'm concerned, that hasn't happened unless I've missed something. But I would, I know you're the liaison to the police department, and I'd like to know why in our community there is not a youth officer on duty on the weekend.
All right, there are several pieces to respond to all of that. The first is, as your man may not be aware, we have a new youth officer, Officer Jesse Woolman, who was moved from the patrol division to become the youth officer just within the last month. That was occasioned by the fact that Bob Goke, who has been our youth officer, is currently on a leave status. And so Jesse was chosen from the patrol division and is, I think, an excellent choice for that purpose, but he is learning the ropes in this process. There certainly has been some outreach. In fact, Jesse was up at Perrin University at the middle school a couple of weeks ago, and as a result, that was his first, I think, public appearance for outreach, but we envision more. As I think you may also know, we've been in the business of rotating our patrol officers through youth officer training. Obviously, not every officer has the same level of training as a dedicated youth officer, but we're not in a position where we can guarantee to have our dedicated youth officer, obviously, available every time somebody might be needed. So we're making pretty good progress in making our way through the patrol group to get them youth officer training.
Excuse me, but I have to vehemently disagree with that statement. If there is no youth officer available on a weekend, I don't think we're meeting any standard.
I did not say that there would be no youth officer available on the weekend. I said, "We're not in a position to have a youth officer available every time one might be needed."
Well, wouldn't that be a constant scheduling to have the youth officer work or alternate with other patrol members? Or I believe Detective Peterson is a certified youth officer.
That is true as well. We are, I expect that Jesse Woolman will be on a rotating schedule. He's been through a training process right now. The schedule has not been finalized, but I'll be happy to follow up with the chief and understand from them how they intend to deploy the youth officers they have in place. But as you can imagine, the business of making the conversion to a new incumbent in that office involves some rearrangement and a period of time when there's more training going on than would be the case once he's got his feet wet.
And so the chief is the one who's responsible, who sets the schedule for having youth officers available on any given weekend? Is that who does the scheduling?
The chief and the lieutenants do the scheduling. The chief is ultimately responsible. The lieutenants do the scheduling on a day-to-day basis.
Well, I don't think that many people in this community, never that Officer Goke or Detective Goke is no longer the youth officer. And, you know, getting back to the idea of there being some outreach to the community, you know, apart from appearing at the middle school, you know, hopefully, in the middle school level, you're not really having that much exposure and need, although it is important. But older kids, their parents, you know, are not aware of any of this staff change. And it isn't anything, you know, that was voiced on back in, you know, October of '09 when, you know, we were advocating, you know, more of a connection to our youth officers and our police department.
Well, what I can tell you is that we've introduced our new youth officer, Woolman, to the school administration. He's been to the high school and met with the senior staff there, and there is nobody within the school district administration that's not clear on what has happened in the transition we've made in our youth officer division.
About the parents in the community.
There are always opportunities to do better. I can tell you that we're absolutely open to your suggestions on what you think would be good outreach, and would be more than happy to hear them. So if you want to shoot me an email about kinds of outreach activities you'd like to see happening, I'm more than happy to have that discussion with you as well as the police department. But I can tell you from personal knowledge that I think Jesse is going to be an excellent person to have in that position, and I can tell you that he has been quite proactive in his first few weeks in this job in reaching out to the people that need to know him.
Well, perhaps it might be a good idea to have him available on Pleasantville Day when there'll be lots of parents and lots of kids out and about who might see the new face of the youth officer. So I, you know, as always, I look forward to some improvement in that area.
Okay.
And also, I was wondering what your opinion, or anybody on the board's opinion, would be to the editorial and the examiner about Pleasantville having to really look at the expense that our police department costs our community and merging services.
Here's what I would say about that. We have to look at the expense of everything we do, and we're in the midst of doing that, as you know, in a number of areas. Police department is on the list, just like every other department is on the list. Some of you may have read in yesterday's Journal News that the details of a study that's been going on for quite some time about merging the Briar Cliff Manor, Austing Town, and Austing Village Police Departments has been released, I guess in summary form, the details yet to be seen. And it suggests that the merger of those three departments into one could, over a period of time, reduce the total headcount of officers from something like 100 in those three jurisdictions to something in the 70s at a potential savings of something like $3 million a year or so.
Very impressive.
It's going to be interesting to see the details of that study, which has been ongoing, I guess, since, for a year or more. And I can tell you that on our side of the table, we are actively engaged in talking to our neighboring communities about sharing and consolidating services in many areas. I've been meeting over at Mount Pleasant on an every-two-or-three-week basis for the last several months. Joan Mayberry has been both cordial and interested and engaged, and I am confident that there are going to be some opportunities that arise out of that as well. So we are definitely on it. We're not sitting here in any area of the village with intent to protect the status quo. We're looking to protect the aspects of this village that make it unique, and at the same time find ways to, as I said earlier in the meeting, rearrange the chess pieces a little bit because government has turned into a very expensive thing at every level, and we all have an obligation to find ways to make it more affordable as we go forward.
Very good. Well, I appreciate your efforts, Peter. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
And shoot me that email if you have some thoughts about outreach issues for youth officers. Anybody want to add anything to any of that? Okay, resolution number 99. We did that. Last one is resolution number 100. That was added to our stack. Here we go.
Resolved that the Board of Trustees, the village of Pleasantville pursuant to Part 617.20 of the State Environmental Quality Review Act, as lead agency hereby determines that its project referred to as installation of a solar array at the Department of Public Works is an unlisted action that will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, do you want to describe for everybody what this project is? It's actually our first and thus far only identifiable hit in the stimulus funding game.
I know, it sounds like a very strange project. We are getting federal funds through the stimulus program to install on a portion of our Public Works Department roof a solar panel system that will allow us to replace a good deal of that facility's energy from electricity to solar energy. So it's exciting. We have a $250,000 federal grant thereabout. We have a matching requirement, a little under $30,000.
And at the time that we looked at this and agreed to the matching requirement of about $30,000, it's clear that the payback for us is very quick to be generating solar energy and much reducing our reliance on purchased electricity in the Public Works garage. So thanks to everybody who was involved in assisting us in getting that, among them, our local resident, Tom Riley, who's involved with a group called Ross Solar, which, Tom was tremendously helpful in the process of putting together the application we made for this. So thank you very much. Any further comment, new business? There being no further new business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So what?
Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Thank you very much. Our next work session is from Monday, May 17. Our next regular meeting is Monday, May 24, at 8:00 p.m. Work session at 7:00. We look forward to seeing you soon. Thanks.
Bye.